Okay, I'd like to call a planning commission meeting order for Thursday, March 14th. Mr. Zimmer, could we have a call of the roll call, please?
Don McBride. Chris Bryant.
Here.
Joe Chappell. Rene Spinato.
Here.
Vern Ogden.
Here.
So we have three, so we have a quorum. The first item that we would discuss are public comments that would have to do with any comments other than what the matters are before us this evening. Do we have any new comments? Okay. We had down for approval the previous minutes from January 22nd, 2019, special meeting, but we're going to table that until we have a quorum with that thing. Item four is a public hearing followed by discussion and possible action on an application from Art Atkinson for a special use permit and two variances, exceptions, to the residential accessory building standards as set forth in ordinance number 3315 for a proposed detached 1,200-square-foot shop building at 213 Foster Road as follows. Three items: A, special use permit for an exception to the front yard setback standard; B, variances and exception to the limit of residential accessory buildings on any one lot; and C, variances, exception to the maximum cumulative square footage of multiple residential accessory buildings on one lot. And if we can hold up a minute, we have one more commissioners just made it. Please, Mr. Zimmer, not note that Mr. Chappell is here, please.
Yes, sir.
So before we get into the staff recommendations things, could I have anybody that would like to discuss this on public comments? If you would be kind enough to come to the podium, identify yourself and your address and a phone number, and we can have all that for the record, please.
My name is Art Atkinson. I live at 213 Foster Road, and my phone number is area code 405-659-3854.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Please go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you guys for hearing our request on this accessory building. When we built our house, we built a small garage, not knowing that that would be considered one of our accessory buildings, so we kind of shot ourselves in the foot on that one, but...
Detached, I take it?
Yes. The, we have a unique elevation of our land where it's tiered off on three or four different levels, and that's why we built a detached garage to compensate for that. And then our land came with a, with an existing whole barn that was built in the early 80s. It's, it's a decent barn, but it's not what we're wanting. We're wanting a climate-controlled type building for our hobbies and everything in the future. And that's kind of why we're here. We're just hoping that you guys consider letting us do that and see how it goes, you know? But we've taken that piece of land that was overgrown and had an old dilapidated barn on it and cleaned it up, put a big drainage system in to protect Foster Road. The water runs off our property, goes under Foster Road and goes into the backwater of the lake. And when we bought the land, it was a big washed-out hole and pretty bad shape, so we spent a lot of time and money trying to make this a really nice place. So we appreciate your consideration.
I understand also you might talk to this, the land, it's a rather narrow parcel, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's only 160 feet deep, but it's 605 feet wide. So we have 605 feet of frontage road, road frontage. So that's why we can't build our accessories, our new shop behind the back line of the house, it's just not deep enough. But we're still going to be, I believe, I've got it here in my notes, like 80 feet off the road? So we're still set back quite a ways on that part. The land's kind of unique. It doesn't run true east and west. It kind of runs at an angle a little bit, the way the road is, so we're still going to be quite a ways back off the road.
With the new building?
Yes, sir.
That you wanted to do?
Yes, sir. We're going to be about halfway back at the center line of the house. And then our house is a two-story, so, you know, we have a pretty tall height. And then we have a, probably about a 10-foot elevation drop between the house and where we want to build our new building. So it's going to put the new building substantially lower than the house.
Okay.
And we've got a pad there, we, you know, we're ready to go, just if you guys let us do it, you know, it's, we're hopeful.
Have any of you had any questions for Mr. Atkinson? Commissioners?
I, I do not.
Do you, do you plan on continuing to use the other barn that's already existing?
Well, I'm going to use that for my lawn equipment, my tractors and everything, but what I'd like to do is build this new building, move everything out of that building so I can refurbish it to make it look, to match the
Yeah.
...the house and the new building a little bit more. And this is just a rendering of what we're kind of wanting to build, just a, just a building with a lean-to porch on the side. If you'd like to see it, I can just give you a copy of it.
Does that have any eaves, overhangs on that?
It will have 12, 12-inch overhangs. Now, the rendering doesn't really show it, but I'll make sure that's...
Okay.
Okay.
I'll get a certified drawing and everything if we get approval before, to submit it before we do anything, just to make sure everybody's good with what we're planning on doing. Then, of course, we'll put landscaping around it, some trees and that type of thing.
Oh, sorry.
Again, any questions for Mr. Atkinson, Commissioner?
I drove by your property yesterday evening, and it's really, really nice and well-maintained and, I'm sure, a great improvement from how it was before.
Yeah. It used to be chest-high when we first bought that piece of property. The grass, everything was, you know. We've spent a lot of time on it. We spent a year working on it so far. Well, before we even built, started our home, we spent a year just cleaning the land, like I said, tearing down that old building, cleaning out the existing building that's there, and going through this, through the fire department to get burn permits, to burn trees. I've taken out a lot of cedar trees and underbrush, and still have a lot to do, but I figure I've got another good 20, 25 years in me, so keep me busy till then.
Good.
I hope.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Could we have staff report, please, Mr. Zimmer, on the, on the whole situation as your, as staff is coming up with, please?
Mr. Alsop will be covering that section.
All right, then we will be happy to hear from Mr. Alsop on the staff report.
I'll try to cover these items individually. The first one is a special use permit...
Perhaps, Mr. Alsop, for the viewing public, could you identify yourself, or maybe those that haven't met you, we all have had the pleasure, but go ahead.
I'm sure there's a few people in town that don't know who I am, but Leroy Alsop, City Manager.
Thank you.
The, I'll try to address these one at a time. The first one, A, special use permit for an exception to the front yard setback standard. I won't read it, but in my staff report, I put the section of ordinance number 3315 that deals with the opportunity to get a special use permit approved by the city council based on a recommendation of the city planning if you're going to ask to build a accessory building that is not behind the back wall of your house. And it does allow that, and if you look at the Board of Adjustments parts relative to that, to kind of give an ideal of what you might consider, and looking at granting such a special exception, when Board adjustments on other issues look at variances, things like by reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of a specific piece of property, or exceptional topography, those are some of the basis that would be considered a hardship that you might allow a variance like on a setback requirement. So if you look at this the same way, the, in this particular case, given the elongated narrow shape of the property at 213 Foster Road, it would appear there is merit to the planning commission to consider recommending to the city council a special use permit for an exception to the front yard setback standard for the proposed shop building on this property. On the second one, the variance exception to the limit...
Mr. Al, before we, so our staff comment to that one would be, as we have it here...
Correct. I didn't change since I sent it out.
Okay, so I'm saying basically on the staff comment, as you feel like there is
Correct.
There is reason for us to merit.
Merit.
Okay, following along with her, go ahead.
On the second one, variance exception to the limit of residential accessory buildings on any lot, ordinance number 3315 sets the maximum number of residential accessory buildings. There's two different options. One, with a detached garage, you can have up to two detached residential accessory buildings, or if you have detached accessory buildings, including a detached garage. So with the garage being attached, you can only have two, and that would be the existing shop and the garage. The ordinance itself does not provide any provisions for the planning commission and the city council to vary from that. On the setback of the building being the front yard setback, the ordinance specifically provides an avenue for a special permit by the planning commission, but it did not, the ordinance did not provide any power or authority to give additional units. If you look at the Board of Adjustments, if you say, well, go to the Board of Adjustments, normally the Board of Adjustments looks at things like front yard setbacks, and so you look at the narrowness of the property, the topography, and say somebody's property dropped back, dropped off on the backside, you might allow them, if it didn't adversely affect traffic and other things, to move their building closer to the road than the typical setback because of the challenge of the property. When you look at, if you go to Board of Adjustment, what hardship would you suggest if you want three buildings when the ordinance allows two? I mean, the only, you know, I've got more stuff than the guy across the street, so trying to develop a hardship for it would be difficult. Now, in this case, there may be some merit. Mr. Atkinson has indicated that his garage is not attached because of the topography, and that might be something to look at.
But there was no limit on the number before, were there?
Correct. There was not, and I'm going to get to that.
So when the, so when the ordinance was written, then I guess it should have addressed who could give a variance or a special use, or...
If, if you want to, of course, we could always go back and amend the ordinance, but how firm do you want to be? Because if you say you can have an attached garage and two outbuildings, or you can have, if you have a detached garage, you can have a detached garage and one more, well, if you provide a provision for that, one, what would be the hardship you would base it on? What, what reasoning would you have to say one landowner should have three buildings and everybody else be limited to two? I've got more stuff than you do, or, I mean, there'd have to be some rationale established on why you would allow more buildings, either because size of the property or something, but, but what would be the hardship? But it could be amended to do that, but then you'll have, you know, everybody that has two that wants three, they're going to come to Board of Adjustment and ask to, and then the next thing you know, somebody will want four.
What's the answer?
On this particular case, I think we have an answer. Again, the same thing on, if you look at, under the old ordinance qualifications, the size of all of his outbuildings, his house, add it together, the square footage at the floor level, would be eligible for him to have this additional shop. But in the new ordinance where you limit it to 1,400 square feet outbuildings cumulative, he will have, if he builds the proposed shop, he will have 2,300 square feet of outbuildings or accessory buildings, the three of them.
Including his garage?
Correct, which exceeds the 1,400 by almost 1,000 feet. So in this case, what Mr. Atkinson's pursuit of his building permit predates the effective date of our current ordinance. And if you look at the standards under the old ordinance, he could have built a building that he's asking to build, but he couldn't have put metal siding on it prior to this new ordinance being adopted. Mr. Atkinson was very patient, and he participated in some of our early meetings when we were looking at allowing metal siding on buildings in certain parts of the town. There was no way Mr. Atkinson could foretell that we would go further than just dealing with metal-sided buildings and add additional requirements dealing with size of building, number of buildings. So it's staff's opinion, let me do two other things before I give you staff's opinion. We have not received any adverse comments from the adjacent property owners that got notice, or anybody from the publication in the newspaper, so there's been no adverse feedback to staff. Number two, if you look at the area that this property is in, we don't feel that this shop, additional shop, will create an adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Given that Mr. Atkinson's application predated the effective date of the ordinance, what staff feels appropriate is to have the planning commission recommend that city staff administratively grandfather this application under the old ordinance, because his application being predated before the new ordinance that he would be eligible to be grandfathered. Now, that would mean that he wouldn't be able to have a metal shop under those strict things. But I think in a sense of fairness, we ought to go to the next step and allow him to have a metal siding on the 12-foot, 1,200-square-foot new shop as long as he follows the new guidelines. It is pre-installed finished paint from the earth tone color palette, or a color palette which complements the main dwelling structure, has raised or standing seams, is a minimum of 26-gate steel, and has corner trim. So we think the appropriate thing to do here...
And 12-inch eave. That's, that's part of it, that he planned on that.
I think that that is in a different section. The one I'm quoting just has to do with the type of metal, not the type of roof and all that. Yes, he, we would ask him if he's going to use metal to follow all those standards. So it's staff's recommendation that you allow us to administratively grandfather this application?
Members, any, any questions for our City Manager?
No, I'm good with it.
And we did get the 12-inch eaves in, you were a little concerned about there, Commissioner Chappell?
This is a heck of a way to start, isn't it?
It is.
I'm, I'm inclined to agree with staff's recommendations. I think this request is unique because of the timeline of when the building permit was, was applied for, and your patience and involvement in our meetings and dialogue. And there, there was no way for them to foresee the direction that we were going to go with the ordinance. So I want to make it clear that now that the ordinance is in place and there is much less ambiguity going forward based on the, the specifics, I would be inclined to decline any future requests that did not meet the ordinance criteria, and to be very firm on that. But for this one exception, and I know it looks like we're already making exceptions under the new ordinance, but I think this is a unique situation, and so I would, I would be very concerned about future applications with these same numbers.
Correct, and that's a decision that you all are going to have to make, because I'm sure there will be people that come forward that with good intent, but they will think, you know, why, what's the harm in having one more outbuilding? Or if you limit it to 1,400 square feet, why not 2,000 square feet? How firm are you going to be with those? The way the ordinance is set up, they're etched in stone. There is no exceptions for those kind of provisions.
Any other comments? Well, I think...
I have a, I do.
Go ahead, Joe.
I was, I was curious about, in the picture, your house is blue?
Yes.
Okay, is the building going to be blue?
The building, I mean, I can make any color that fits into the landscape. I don't know if I really want...
And is the roof going to be the...
It's going to be, I'd like to...
So those colors that you presented were red and...
Well, that's, that was just the rendering of, of a building that I had quoted, but those are not the colors of that.
We did not have Mr. Atkinson go forward and present detailed plans
Right.
...because that would be an expense that would be unnecessary if he could not meet these basic requirements.
I was just curious if that was the actual, actual color of the building that you were wanting to build?
Well, the current shop is, is more of a beige, was Dr. Brown trim?
Yes, and I would like to update that after I, if I get approval to build a new building, I'd like to update that building to match more with what we built.
With the whole, with the residential?
The entire product suggestion. It needs to be updated. It's built in the early 80s and...
And we would just, we recommend for future, if it's metal siding, that it's earth tone color palette, or a color palette which complements the main dwelling structure. So when you submit it, just work with him. And I would point out that if we grandfather him, that if he tears down the first shop that was on the property, he would not be able to rebuild that one, because the grandfather would end. Now, he can repair it and renovate it, but if for some reason you tore that first one down, the guy would, I would, I would not agree with that 100 percent.
Well, certainly, as I'm sure you heard, the, the overhangs make, and the first shop doesn't have that, of course. The overhangs make them look much more compatible to a home, and that's one of the reasons that that was done. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Bryant, for your comments there. Any other thoughts, Commissioners? You've been awful quiet, Commissioners Spinato?
I know. It's a first.
Uh-huh.
It's a first.
So if you agree with staff's recommendation, the motion would be to recommend that staff grandfather this application.
And is there any necessity?
I guess my only concern is just trying to complement the house, one way or the other.
Sure. And we'll work with him on doing that.
Yeah.
And the 12-inch overhang.
And actually, when I saw this, I didn't notice that it had the, the, well, I noticed that the eaves weren't there. And I had brought this, and I've, after we vote, I, I want to show this to you, just because these are, these are some metal buildings that really look like they fit in a neighborhood, and they're ver, and what's strange, the first one looks a lot, a lot like the one...
And I like that it looks a lot.
Is a lot like the one that you were, that you showed us.
And if it is grandfathered administratively, it would not have to go forward to the city council.
Say that again, sir?
If it is grandfathered administratively, it would not have to go forward to the city council, it would be administrative action.
And that would be for items B and C?
Yes.
A, B, and C.
Well, I think it, it would, we would just treat them all grandfathered.
All three of them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Alsop, I'm part of the planning commission, I certainly compliment you all. It's been a really nice job that you've all done on, on your staff comments and stuff. I'll entertain a motion for someone.
I'd like to go ahead then. Do you want us to vote separately on these, or as one?
I think you can lump them all together and just say that you recommend that we administratively grandfather this application for A, B, and C.
There we go.
That motion's so made?
Right, motion's so made, and then that, that we move forward with this. I do want to reiterate again what Chris said, that from here on out, we, the planning commission will need to strictly adhere to what the, the guidelines are, not only because it, it is grandfathered due to time, but this is truly a unique parcel of land. And I think as a planning commission who looks deeply at each individual application, we have to look to see not only what is right for the site, but what is right for the community. And in this case...
And, and staff agrees with Leroy's assessment going forward, that the, the applications will need to meet the ordinance. We just didn't feel like it was fair play for someone that had started pursuing this prior to the new ordinance, and now he would suffer consequences by trying to be a good citizen and wait for the new ordinance, and then...
You've more than done your due diligence.
Right, we truly appreciate that, yes.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Would you like to repeat that back, Mr. Zimmer, and, and so that it's properly worded, please?
We are going to administratively grandfather this application in areas A, B, and C.
And again, with the understanding this does not have to go to city council, is that correct?
Yes, if we, normally, if we did something administratively, it would not even come to the planning commission, but because of the unique one situation, we wanted to make sure the planning commission agreed with the staff's interpretation, so that we're all in the same pack.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Mr. Zimmer, could we call a vote, please?
Vern Ogden?
Yes.
Chris Bryant?
Yes.
Joe Chappell?
Yes.
Rene Spinato?
Close enough, yes.
The, the vote passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Alsop. Thank you very much, Mr. Atkinson, and your, your other folks.
Thank you all very much.
And thank you for your patience in working with us.
Yeah. And thank you for investing in Guthrie.
You're welcome. I'm glad to be here. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I think one of the most helpful things was the inclusion...
Yes, I guess I'll see you in a couple days with plans and an application?
Yep, it may take me a few days to get it together, and I'll bring a color chart, and we'll make sure we got everything squared away.
Here, your other picture back.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
This is our neighbor, and she just showed up here.
Would you like to, to come up here and introduce yourself, and we'll, we'll let you make a little final statement to it?
My name is Mrs. Calvin E. Selman, Jessica Selman, and I'd like to say that these people have really cleaned up that area out there. They have gone to a lot of trouble to fix our drain problems down at the bottom, because it would get blocked up. They're not trashy people, they're really cleaning up that lot. And it was a bad barn with a lot of rats and skunks and coons in it all the time, so we appreciate them coming and cleaning it up.
My apologies that we didn't give you a chance to speak before that, sorry about that. Nice to have you. Thank you very much, Ms. Selman. Okay, moving on to item six, staff comments. Mr. Bryant?
None at this time.
Ms. Spinato?
The one comment I would like to make is a comment of appreciation for your involvement with this, and if I could issue that as a challenge to all future applicants that may come forward, being able to work with the applicant through the, the commission and, of course, through staff, really makes the whole job easier, because we see exactly what the intent is. Maybe there's a little more information so that we can read it better, if you will. That way, a document then just isn't presented to the commission, you know, only prior before the meeting. Having more information, more discussion ahead of time always helps, so thank you so much. much.
By the way, I jumped, I jumped staff comments and went to commission comments, but now we'll drop back to staff comments. Do you have something there, Mr. Alsop?
I do. We have a new city planner that has accepted the position. We'll be doing a formal announcement probably next week. The gentleman holds a degree in geography from the University of Iowa. He served roughly four years in the United States Navy. His career experience is inclusive of and not limited to serving five years as senior planner for King County, California, and 12 years as city planner for Lake Havasu City, Arizona. So he's got over 16 years of, or 17 years of planning experience, and he will begin his duties on Monday, April 8.
Monday, April?
April 8.
Fantastic.
He won't see me, but maybe one more meeting.
I'm sorry, again, Monday, April?
8.
April 8, thank you. Well, thank you very much.
Congratulations to you.
Yes.
That's the only staff comment.
Okay, that's from your staff. Mr. Zimmer, any comments? You're over there running us tonight.
No, sir, I'm along for the ride.
Okay. We've already heard from Mr. Bryant and Ms. Spinato. Mr. Chapel?
I've got nothing.
Okay, nor do I. So with that, we will adjourn, and thank you all for your attendance.